Second.
Capron.
Here.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott. Waters.
Aye.
I move we during the close session, second.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Hold the call please.
One moment, I have to stop this recording and start anew. Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Capron.
Here.
Gretkin.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silence there followed by the President. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a proclamation. Going to make it through the meeting? John Burns.
Yeah, I got one more. We have a commendation that reads whereas on the evening of November 21st during the adult hockey league at the IBP Ice Center, a gentleman collapsed on a bench in cardiac arrest and whereas several of the man's teammates, John Burns, Robert Remick, Tyler Brinker, and Kyle Lierman quickly went into action, they provided four rounds of CPR as well as utilized an AED until the paramedics were able to arrive. Whereas it had not been for the quick thinking and fast action of Burns, Remick, Brinker, and Lierman, the man would likely not have survived. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of City Council, do hereby commend John Burns, Robert Remick, Tyler Brinker, and Kyle Lierman for their quick response, recognition of the severity of the medical emergency, and the immediate actions which resulted in the avoidance of a terrible tragedy. Also, thank you to the Sulan District Health Department and the Service Area 3B Healthcare Coalition for providing six AEDs this past year to the Parks and Recreation Department. This partnership is truly a lifesaver. I'd say thank you first of all, and say a few words if you would like, and give those to the guys.
Yeah, will do. Thank you, Bob. This is really nice for whoever put this together. Just wanted to give an update, the kid ended up okay, just saw him last night, so really a scary situation that ended up going really well with the fast actions Tyler and the other guys helped out and won well-placed AED, so that worked out really well. We're happy the way it ended up and like I said, thanks for the recognition, this is awesome and happy the way it ended, so thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We want to go on to interviews for boards and commissions, Building and Housing Code Board, Rick Bertrand. Tell us why you want to serve on the Housing Code Board? And what, there's different classifications, so are you applying as a home builder without, I guess it matters, but go ahead, we'll figure out how you get on there.
Rick Bertrand, 1501 Peavy Street. Yes, I was speaking with Darryl, I think it is for the residential side, I think he's looking at. So as you guys know, I've been building for about 22 years, about 13 on my own. You know what they say is if you want to change things, you got to get involved, so I'm not looking for a resume builder or to spend an evening on the board, but I think this is the best way that we can implement some of the changes. Darryl and I work well together, I work well with most of the guys in the field from Ken, Stu, Mark, I think we can make some changes. It's funny that we always add to the code, you don't see a lot of the code being reeled back, so my goal going into this is going to be really transparent, it's going to be to reel back some of the things that probably are dated as we've kind of progressed, as building has progressed, so I'm going to bring a real-world perspective to it. I'm not going in there just to kind of sit, I'm going in there to really try to make some changes. Bob, I know you've stressed on several occasions that the permitting process needs to speed up in this town, I think we can push it more to the field, and speaking with other contractors and subcontractors, they've got ideas, I'll gather them, bring them, and when I wear out my welcome, I'll leave, but if not, I promise we'll get some positive changes and on the right track. Any questions?
No, I do have a comment. Being that I texted you and already congratulated you.
You know what, I didn't respond.
That was kind of, that was fast forward, but I do think that you'll do a great job, so you will have my vote.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Hey Rhonda, thanks for your service very much, congratulations on your tenure, you were great for business and you're great for us, seriously, you were great for business, so again, thanks, guys, I appreciate the votes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Willie Delfts. When you send this out, will you send us how many we have and who, what different division needs one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Willie, I'm sorry.
Okay, Council, Willie Delfts, 20545th Street, Sioux City. I actually just termed off this board as the home builder member, I threw my hat in in case Darryl didn't come up with someone else. If there is a position available for me, I would do it, I would happily serve again. I like looking out on behalf of the home builders, my business of course, and the industry. In the years that I've done this, I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think it's good to keep an eye on, like the Senator deferred to, some of the bad things that are going on in our industry and keep caps on it. Any questions?
Thanks for applying.
Honestly, Bob, I don't remember.
Looks like three terms, and thank you for your commitment.
Yeah, thanks.
Pretty nice.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Willie. Thank you.
Fiscal, Executive Fiscal and Public Policy Committee, Mr. Tramontina. Come forward.
Mark Tramontina, 3456 Strawberry Lane. I'm applying for this committee position, I've served there once, two years ago. Government finance, as many of you know, has been a big part of my life, otherwise, finance has been a big part of my life. In the last term that I was on, the committee we dealt with, sales of right-of-ways, sewer rates, cone park rates, swimming rates, any number of other things that may have come to the council that they may have asked for some kind of input, and that's what the committee does. Any questions?
Glad you applied.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. Yeah. Me too, you're qualified.
Okay, Museum Board of Trustees, Gregory Giles. How many openings on this one?
You're just finding yourself in these chambers a lot, let me tell you what.
Like a bad penny, I keep turning up.
I thought, doesn't he know the dog will pass?
Or so I've been told. Gregory Giles, 33676 South Ridge Road, 51108. I'm here to renew, if possible, my term, I've just completed my first session of three-year commitment to the Museum Board of Trustees and would like to continue on for a second term. I enjoy very much my work on the Museum Board of Trustees, I am a third-generation museum board member, my grandmother, my father, mother, and brother at all sort of the museum historical association, so I'm very honored and proud to be on the Museum Board of Trustees. Any questions?
You've done a good job, Gregory.
Steve's done a good job, Steve is a wonderful manager.
Volunteers.
Steve in the audience.
I was going to say, come on.
His ears are burning.
Yeah. Well, they should be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gregory. John Myers. You got everything straightened out on the old board, now you're moving to another one?
Do something different.
Oh, okay.
John Myers, 4404 Natalia Way, Sioux City. I am asking the council to appoint me to the museum board. I became particularly interested in museum board over the last few years as I started to get a little older and started donating some family albums and other items to the museum, and I very much appreciate what they do, and I think I could be a good part of it. If you have any questions.
What's that, what year is the car you drive around now, Chevy, the turquoise colored one?
59.
59, are you going to put that in the museum? Did you paint it, because it used to be brown?
Right after. I figure there'll be a sarcophagus there that could be a part of it.
Thanks for putting it in, John, I appreciate it, you can be counted on. Did you paint that, because it used to be brown? I thought he had a turquoise one that...
No, it's brown with a white top, has been since I turned 40, which is rather a while back.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Let's do the Mayor's Youth Commission accomplishments, what do you guys got for us?
My name is Mary Coaster, and I am the Youth Services Director for Sulan Cares, and I work with this wonderful line of people who will introduce themselves, and they will tell you about what we've done this year, and they will be available for questions afterwards.
All right. Fire away.
Hello, my name is Amon Alahi, and I am a senior at Healan High School. I serve as the Mayor's Youth Commission Mayor. The Sioux City's Mayor's Youth Commission accomplishments, January to November 2019. The purpose of the Mayor's Youth Commission is to explore, communicate, and provide for the needs, problems, issues, and activities affecting the city's youth. The goals of Mayor's Youth Commission are to make a positive impact, positive impact of the community and feel valued, to encourage youths to develop into their full potential, to hold leadership sessions for youth, to increase their knowledge and skills, to participate in community service and activities, and to have the youth feel that they have made a positive contribution to society.
Good afternoon, I'm Ryan Doherty, I'm a senior at Bishop Healan as well, and on the executive council, I served as the Administration Services Director. So Sulan Cares, they facilitate the activities of the Youth Commission, and they coordinate all the adult advisors that we have. The Sioux City Police Department is also lay us in between Sioux City Youth Commission and the Sulan Cares. The Sioux City Youth Commission uses the emails, the Mayor's Youth Commission website, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, phone calls, and direct mail to communicate with its members. The executive council coordinated activities for its 133 active members of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission, plus the 29 young ambassadors, with the help of Sulan Cares who coordinated the eight adult advisors we have. The participating high school students were from the following schools: Bishop Healan, East, North, West, and Iowa Connections Academy.
Hello. Hello, my name is Christopher Knackel, and I am a junior at West High. I serve as a Mayor's Youth Committee product director, project director. Members of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission and Sioux City Young Ambassadors contributed 7,106 hours back to the Sulan community through planning, meetings, and community service from January through November. The executive council members held an orientation session for 63 new members in February 2019. The top concerns they have are alcohol and drug abuse, teen suicide, bullying, peer pressure, mental health crisis, and responsible use of social media and cellphone obsession.
Hello, my name is Miana Parker, and I am a sophomore at East High School. I serve as a MYC project director. Young ambassadors, the Youth Commission administered the Sioux City Young Ambassador Program and coordinated a Young Ambassador recognition event for 40 students in grades fourth through seventh in May. All students received items donated from agencies and businesses, and 10 students received additional awards. Members of the MYC will mentor the 10 students through the year. Approximately 200 parents and family members attended. The keynote address was given by Sioux City Councilman Alex Waters. The Young Ambassador's keynote speakers were Adelaide Gasaway and Grace Hoag, who spoke on their experiences with the Young Ambassador Program.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jabre, and I'm a junior at Bishop Healan. I serve as an MYC project director. Regarding educational sessions, MYC members, young ambassadors, and their parents heard presentations about the Be Somebody platform and the bullying prevention campaign from Bernie Hess, a retired school counselor, Jane Griesel of the CSADV, Rachel Lundgren from Jackson Recovery Center, and the BTU enactors team. Town hall meetings discussing underage drinking, vaping, the League of Women Voters of Sioux City, the Sulan Human Society, and the Rose Cranes Jackson Centers were held during the Red Ribbon Week.
Hello, my name is Aria Elias, and I am a junior at North High School. I serve as a Mayor's Youth Commission Finance Director. Fundraisers, Mayor's Youth Commission raised $4,500 to fund a new disc golf course which was built in Leaf Erickson Park and dedicated in the spring of 2019. Participated in Sulan Cares Paint the Town Red fundraiser by selling 1,900 tulip bulbs, helped with the Sulan Cares Wiffle Ball Classic. Mayor's Youth Commission members participated in 30 compliance checks to discourage the selling of alcohol to underage youth, maintained volunteer opportunities for youth guide, listing nearly 50 agencies for participation in community service activities. Members participated in summer cleanup of litter at the Disc Golf Course in Saratoma Park, Grandview Park, and Leaf Erickson Park.
The 2019 Executive Council, the Mayor, Amon Alahi, Mayor Protem, Nick McGowan, Legal Director, Henry Sealy, Financial Director, Aria Elias, Administrative Services Director, Ryan Doherty, Marketing Director, Elizabeth Meyer, Young Ambassador's co-directors, Caleb French and Jenna Rethman. Project Directors are Lisbeth Garcia, Amarillas Gonzalez, Owen Hoke, Sarah Jabre, Christopher Knackel, Katie Menke, Riley Malacheski, Mayana Parker, Carly Stus, and Caleb Winter. The adult advisors are Steve Beekman from the Sulan Community Health Department, Brittany Book, Sulan Cares Executive Director and former Mayor's Youth Commission Member, Bernie Hess, community volunteer, Terry Ivener, Sioux City Police Department, and Mary Coaster, Sulan Cares, Rachel Lundgren, Sulan Cares, and Angel Wallace, Sioux City Parks and Rec. Thank you for letting us present this information to you. Any questions?
Thank you, I just want to say that when we, and I don't know why you guys don't come to that, we have an annual, Bob, are we not inviting them, but we have an annual volunteer night. Mary, do they get invited?
They do.
You guys need to come because nothing else for, I said that when I spoke to that group, you know, they had 4,000 hours, which is a lot, and it's great that the community has volunteers that'll give 4,000 hours in volunteer work to the city like they do on our different boards and commissions, but you guys do 7,106, it says, which is incredible when you think about that for the number of youth that you have in a one-year period, so you should be congratulated for that, and thank you for what you've done for the community this past year, we very much appreciate it.
We certainly do, I, you know, I keep thinking year after year when you give the annual report that you're just not going to top the previous year, and each year you do do that, I mean, you're an awesome group, when I interviewed with the media about this light pollution issue, I raised the Mayor's Youth Commission as someone that would be qualified and could, I have a great deal of respect for your abilities and talents to research something and look into it and come up with some good recommendations, it's just, it's really incredible what you do do. I agree with the mayor too about the number of hours that you spend, and I'm just really proud of all of you, and you're also a real shining example to other students in the community of what this is really all about, so thank you.
I want to add to that also, what we do up here as a council reflects on the younger people, and so we need you to help us. So when you come up with good ideas and do the things that you're doing and have done, that's a huge deal for the whole town of Sioux City. So with that, I appreciate everything you do, and keep up the good work because it comes from the heart, and if you enjoy what you do, you're going to do better, so thanks again for everything, we really appreciate it.
Well, I got skipped over there, so I just wanted to say, no, I'm just kidding, Rhonda. No, you're good, I really appreciate the presentation and really the analysis of all the work that you guys have been doing over the last year and even before, I think that it's difficult to measure a lot of that, things too, a lot of the countless hours and the time away from home and away from your homework and things like that, things like that have already been said. One thing that I do want to point out, and thank you for the promotion of this and the encouragement of this, is the diversity of your board, I think that that is, that is something to showcase, that is something that you should really be proud of, because when I think of the people representing this country, not a lot of them look like you. And I think that that's something that I hope that you take not only here in high school, but that you go on and you continue to serve, you continue to run for public office, and you continue to strive to make that difference, because we need more people like all of you standing up to inspire the leaders of tomorrow, and so I thank you very, very much.
And I'll just simply add that I appreciate the fact that you are taking a vested interest in the community at such an early age, and I'm confident that wherever you end up, whatever your chosen profession will be, you will see the importance of what you did as young people in our community and carry it on to the next community, we hope the next community is right here in Sioux City, but wherever you go, you'll know that you can make a difference, and you can continue to make that difference your entire life, and so for that, I thank you and all the other Mayor's Youth Commission members. And I do also want to acknowledge the adult advisors, if not for the adult advisors and the amount of time that they spend, the program wouldn't be the same. They are excellent mentors, and they demonstrate clearly the importance of volunteerism in our community, so thanks to the adult advisors, and we certainly appreciate all you do, and thanks to each one of you for being leaders in your group, so best wishes for the rest of the school year and wherever you move on to from there. Thank you very much.
We'll see you tonight at 7 o'clock. See you back here at 7, okay? We will go on to consent agenda today, that's items 4 through 14E, consider those items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it, or if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up at the end of the meeting under citizen concerns, but both times remember to state your name and address for the record, I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Four is a reading of the City Council minutes of December 2nd, 2019. Five is a resolution accepting the comprehensive annual financial report, I'm assuming that we must have those if somebody wants a copyright, okay, I don't need one, but six is a resolution appointing new members to the Mayor's Youth Commission. Seven is...
Yes, sir.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Mary Coaster, 120 South Davidson, Youth Services Director for Sulan Cares. I just wanted to mention that we do have 28 new members that we want you to approve today. Their ethnicity consists of 23 Caucasian, one Caucasian Asian American, one Asian American, and three Latino Hispanics. We have 20 students from Bishop Healan, five from East, two from North, and one from Sergeant Bluff Luton. They join other members from those schools, which will make our Mayor's Youth Commission group 118 students that we will be working with, along with the 33 young ambassadors. So we encourage you to...
Unfortunately, we can't get somebody from West.
That's true, we do have nine students from West currently on the commission, but it's, we had a difficult time, usually we get twice as many applications, but not this year.
How does that work, Mary, in the schools? These are 10th graders, correct?
They have...
That make application?
They can be ninth or 10th graders, they have to either live in Sioux City or go to school in Sioux City.
But how do you get the applications?
Usually through the school counselors. We have the application on the city's website, we have it on the Sulan Cares website, all applications are due by October 31st of every year, and the schools are very cognizant of the fact that those are due then, and Bishop Healan is the one who actively recruits lots and lots of their students.
Would there be a teacher that would take that upon herself to do that? Because I think if they knew about it, they'd do better.
They know, they know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure my friend to the left, not politically, just to my left, could mention that. I don't think I would ever be to your left. I don't think you would either, and I take that as a compliment, thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
But you are friends with the school superintendent, I would think you might want to mention that. Next time you have a little meeting, thank you very much for doing that. Seven's a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Ingleside Avenue Reconstruction Project. Eight are resolutions awarding a service provider agreement to Cardis Manufacturing for the South Perimeter Fence Construction Project. Will we ever be done with fence? Because we've bought a lot of fence in the last few years.
Mike Colette, Assistant City Manager, as part of our wildlife control plan, we just have to show continuous improvement and replacement, there's probably another 15,000 feet yet to go around the perimeter that we will target, and we'll use grants as our opportunities to do that.
I know, I know that.
So we have a ways to go yet.
All right, just keep building, I guess. Nine are actions relating to annual reports. Items nine A to D are motions approving the annual reports for the A, Active Transportation Advisory Committee, B, the Arts Center Board of Trustees, C, the Museum Board of Trustees, and D, the Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. Ten are actions relating to personnel, A is a resolution fixing the salary of the city manager, B is a resolution fixing the salary of the city attorney. Well, you guys can get those on right away after we... Don't hesitate. Leven's, actions authorizing the issuance of checks, A is a resolution approving a settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment, B is a resolution approving a change order number four and five and authorizing payments to SubserfCo for the Big Sioux River Trail Phase One project, I need to abstain on that. Twelve are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Reese Mack Sales and Service for 2021 Mack Dump Trucks, and you're recommending the Fort Dodge box, correct?
Mayor and council, under procedure, the Fort Dodge box was the low bid, however, it's only 0.4% lower than the competing box from Sheehan, so that's eligible for local preference, or Stefan, excuse me, Stefan, so it's eligible for local preference. We would just take a motion to council.
Hey, so Ed, can you come up here and tell us what the difference would be and what you guys would prefer?
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, we would actually prefer, from the employee standpoint, the box from Stefan.
That's what we got on right now, right?
No, that's what we got to make. You got the Hawkeyes or whatever, the Fort Dodge. Which is like, whatever Bob said, the percentage.
It's 0.4%, the total is $900, so well within the local preference.
So you want the Stefan boxes?
Hendersons.
Okay.
Okay.
So somebody will need to make a motion to amend. I'll move to amend.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed Stivers Ford for 2024 Supercab trucks. Is that a local option, one, two? I thought...
I believe the next one is, but not this one.
Okay, they've got it as this one.
Oh, then it is.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it looks like it is.
Okay, does anybody want to, but who's, well, go ahead.
Woodhouse, Woodhouse Sioux City is the local preference.
And it's 0.3.
Well, that's a technicality, but they don't have Fords in Sioux City, but okay. I'll make that motion to amend.
Well, it's actually awarding a Dodge Ram then.
Dodge.
Okay, I was going to say, because they don't have Fords.
Second.
Yeah.
Did I have a second?
Rhonda.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Kneffler for three 2020 Chevrolet Silver Extended Cab trucks and two 2020 Silverado Crew Cab trucks. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forward if you have any questions. Fourteen are receipt of minutes, see the list if you have any questions, anyone to be heard on any of those items. Voting electronically. Passes five zero fifteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Telco Triad Community Credit Union for the land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and Authorizing and Development Agreement. Motion is to defer the item till January 27th, 2020 at the request of Telco Triad, I'll move that.
Second. You can vote electronically on this one, the deferral is in there.
Passes five zero sixteen is a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for Glen Avenue Reconstruction Project, I'll move that. Second.
Second.
And we're confident it'll come in bu, on budget this time? Anybody want any side deals on that? Throwing that out. I'm available if you want to talk about it, Gordon. Okay.
Not see me again.
Passes five, zero, seventeen is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Hun Dean Strategic Partners for the redevelopment of the Badger Building deferred from December 2nd. Motion is requested to defer this item until December 16th. I'll move that.
Second.
This can also be voted on electronically.
Top of it.
I'm going to abstain on this one. City Attorney? Conflict of interest? I need to note that, don't I?
Passes five, zero, or four, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstained. Eighteen is a resolution approving amendment number three to the consulting services agreement with Bacon Creek Design for the Big Sioux River Dyke Trail Phase One Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, citizen concerns. We have one from, what did you, the card? Come on up. Annette wants to talk about sidewalk neglected snow, oh, not, not necessarily sidewalk, neglected snow removal. Go ahead.
Um, yes. I'm Annette Schaffsitz at 210 30th Street. This is my seventh winter in Sioux City. I have pictures here. I've never been among this. Can I show you the pictures?
Yeah, sure you can.
This is the one I, this is my seventh year.
And when they don't get your, they stop the snow pushing it?
Right. And you can see where my gate is.
Mm-hmm.
There, you can see, there's the curb in the black.
Okay.
There's the curb scooched out by somebody. What happens there is two to three feet-
Go ahead, back the mic.
If I could ask you to, thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah. And Ed just left, of course, the guy that can control this, but I know you can too, but-
Two to three feet from the curb, the snow will turn to ice. I have called the street department several times throughout the years. They tell me they will take care of it. When they come out to take care of it, it's already frozen and they can't do anything. I have a disability. My 94-year-old mom lives with me. You will see the wheelchair ramp-
Yeah.
-from the porch to the street. With the two to three feet of ice and snow, when it melts, it will go through our path to get to the street and either be ankle-deep in water, or then it will freeze at night and be ice. What, my mother goes to dialysis two times a week and goes to PACE four times a week. There are times when the driver backs up with the lift down. If he gets out on the south side of the house, of the vehicle, I have seen him ankle-to-knee-deep in snow to get around the vehicle. These pictures were the day before Thanksgiving. Today, the snowplow only came to the alley. It did not even come to the house. It's a safety issue for me, for my mother in a wheelchair. It's a safety issue for my PACE drivers, and I have called the street department several times with, I called them the day before Thanksgiving. The plow came through at 8:30. I called them at 8:45, left a message, called them again at 2:00, spoke with the person, explained the disabilities, the shape of the road. She said she would tell the person that should take care of it, and it was never taken care of. This is my seventh year.
I was gonna say, I guarantee you it'll be taken care of now.
Thank you. I, I wasn't sure of the chain of command. Some friends of mine said, okay, you did the street department, now it's city council time.
All right.
Mayor and council, I've given the pictures to Dave, and Dave will meet with her, and we'll get this resolved.
Ed and I will come out and meet with you.
Okay. Yep.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other citizens, Beard? Pete Redkin.
I just wanted to ask, did we get, well, tomorrow at 11:30 is Universal Human Rights Day, and there's a couple of, did we get that posted?
Yes, Jessica called me this morning. I posted it in proper time.
Because you gave it to all of us, I guess.
Yeah.
I did.
Pete, I love it when you send emails, buddy.
How did I do that?
I wasn't signed up for it. I didn't know what it is.
These are all great ones.
They do it annually. It's through Karen Mackin, Human Rights, uh-
I never got an invitation to it until you sent it.
I did.
Uh, it was in the weekly update, if you, if you've read the weekly-
I understand that, but somehow you got an invitation, or you wouldn't have responded.
I think, actually, he added it to his calendar inadvertently.
Sent it out.
Invited everybody.
Somehow it goes to you, I guess, but I had it from somebody else, too, but it, and the interesting thing about that was-
Did you get one? I didn't get one.
The interesting thing was it had everybody else's name, but it didn't have my name.
They only want you to come.
You're the same guy that cancels stuff on your, uh-
Well, in two more, in two more years, I'll get rid of it.
I believe it's at the public museum tomorrow.
It is at the public museum at, at 11:30. I think tomorrow's recipients are, uh-
I cannot be there.
Okay. And they usually do a, they have the awards ceremony at 11:30, then there's a-
I've been before.
Yeah, I can't be there either. Then there's a potluck afterwards.
You're going?
Yes, I'm gonna go at 11.
Okay.
Yeah, I cannot be there either.
I'll be there. But, but I knew it was happening, so I called Jessica just to make sure that it had been posted, because I didn't see when your information comes out for the week. I didn't see it posting on that, so I-
Yeah.
Originally, it was not. It is now.
Okay. And I, and I knew you guys would all be there, so I just wanted to make sure that three of us were. So, that was an, uh, and then I wanted to just real briefly say, I know I got down several times to the volunteer tournament, or to the volleyball tournament, the NAI National Volleyball Tournament. I just wanted to say thanks to all the employees, thanks to all the volunteers. I think it went really well, really, really well from all accounts, and, and I'm looking forward now to basketball in March.
Go Dogs.
Yeah, there you go.
Were you surprised by who won the champion?
Yeah, that was an upset, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, Marion's had some-
Well done.
-great programs over the years, too, so-
But they just weren't picked this year.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
I'm gonna leave with a smile.
Okay. Good girl.
I'm from number one of Ohio State.
You go, girl. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Cyclones can beat those noted-
The Fighting Irish.
We'll have a little side deal on that, Pete, before the game.
You're a betting man, to be honest.
And congratulations to Mornichai getting into the national championship game, too.
It's a big deal.
Okay, Rhonda, what do you have?
Well, I'll tell you what. Yesterday, we went out to the 185th and saw Colonel Christensen get-
General.
General.
General now.
Well, now he's a brigadier, well, he was, he was a-
Yeah, he's not a brigadier, general.
But now he's brigadier general. Mm-hmm. And his good friend, Sully, I think, uh, did the honors. So, it, it's a very great ceremony. We have such a great, uh, relationship with, with the air guard, and I think, I know they, they certainly appreciate it because they've told us many times. So, I just want to thank Pete and, and, and the mayor, of course, being out there, and, and it was a good day.
It was nice.
Very nice.
Just a couple of quick things. First and foremost, I mean, obviously with this woman coming up here, one of the things that bothers me, because I hear it more often than not, are that people call and get a hold of someone, or people call and they don't get a hold of someone, and they don't get a whole call back or anything like that, and then they come before council, and then we can get action taken. Now, I, I will say there's a difference. Some people have reached out to me before via Facebook or via email or things like that, and I've forwarded their response or their request to Ed Pickens or Dave or Gordon, any of them, and, and you guys have been prompt, you know, as far as getting to that, and I really do appreciate that. But sometimes I really hear it quite often that we have citizens that reach out and don't have the same pull or the same ability to be addressed, and that just worries me. It worries me that she made multiple calls and felt the need that she had to come down and address the city council before it would get looked at, and I don't, I don't know the situation. I don't know the road. I don't know who she talked to. I'm not trying to blame anyone. I'm just saying, I think we really need to be as proactive about that, about a range of issues as much as possible, because I hear about it more than I would want to hear about it.
I have a good idea. Is your-
I would, I would recommend you don't do that. If you hear about things, call me immediately.
Why wouldn't this be?
Yeah. Mine is, too. People call me all the time.
What do you recommend?
Call me immediately if, if you hear a complaint about poor customer service.
Because, I mean, that's gotta bother you, too.
It does.
I know that's something that you really care about and are dedicated to, and I think the entire city is, and city staff is. I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to blame anyone. I know we're working hard, but there are certain people, and times I hear about that, and that's really frustrating.
How are you gonna know until they come to you? I mean, if, if they don't call us personally, if they call us personally, we're gonna take care of it right now. No problem, but you don't-
I would just ask that staff be given an opportunity, and if that means me, call me first.
Yeah. And I, I agree. I, I try to give everyone the benefit of the doubt. I hope you really believe that. And sometimes they tell you, trust me, that, oh, I, I called them three times. I did this, and it's like, no, you didn't, but-
Well, get your, get your cell phone number on there, because I'm telling you, you'll get calls.
The citizens that reach out to me, it, sometimes it's a misunderstanding, or they had a, had the wrong department, and, and really, I don't, I don't get that many calls, but, and we don't have that many complaints. So, I mean, I think you're probably doing more right than, and they're gonna be-
Yes.
There are gonna be a few that might-
Yep.
-get missed, but when they call me, I just call one of you, and you have a call to them and me, and not because it's me calling, it's just, I think there's some confusion here. I think there was miscommunication. I'll say it to Dave, and they're, they're good about following up on it. Sometimes they just get the wrong department, because the question I ask is, well, who have you talked with at city hall? I don't know who it was. I'm saying, you, you know, you want to get a name when you're talking to someone, because you might have-
Yeah.
You might not have the right person.
And, and I could tell you, Gabby does a great job, because she knows the department that, you know, that person can tell her what's going on. She knows what department to hook her up with, so.
But I hear you just don't want them picking up on-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, Dan, I completely agree with what you're saying. I hear more good than bad, and I, the complaints I get are fewer and far, fewer and farther between. I just, exactly. I just don't want it to be a problem.
Glad you said that.
The, no problem. The second thing, and I did not get to pull the CIP sheet, and so I apologize. I wanted to look at it, but it's something, Bob, I mentioned to you that I'd really like to talk to you about and look into, was with Emerald Ash, the bore disease for the trees. I want to know, when does that start, that we're starting to allocate that money?
I believe it's already started.
That's what I thought.
But I will have, I will have Kelly Bach put together a summary of where we're at and where we're going.
And, and, because here's my question. I would like to hear that, and I would like to preface it by, the idea that I was thinking about, and Dave and I exchanged emails, and a few of us exchanged emails about different things, but it was, you know, we do these streets projects, and we pull the trees, and I understand the argument, right? I understand the cost. I understand the maintenance. I understand the need for the utilities that are going in to be able to move them. I, I understand all of those valid arguments, Dave, but I, I think that if, if we looked at it holistically and from a big picture standpoint, if we are needing to pull these trees, especially the ash, if we're looking at replanting along these roadways, because you look at some of the pictures, I would say Morningside Avenue and Pierce Street are two great examples. It looks dire. It is, it is just a bare, bare road, and it was sad. It's sad, because they had great canopies and great, and I think that makes it a community. And my point is, I think if we have that, those funds allocated, if we can, if we need to add an additional personnel, because I tell you what, Kelly Bach goes above and beyond, I understand, but I'm saying if that's, if part of what we're allocating could be a person coordinating that effort, we pull those trees, or we help coordinate pulling Emerald Ash, that's a great opportunity to plant more, because we obviously have to plant and return that investment or bring more, we have the desire to do that. I remember it was in the memo, is to plant more of those trees and then coordinate the effort, work with the fire department to go around watering them, because I think that's something we should-
Good. I'm glad you brought that up.
I'm telling you. No, I brought it up la- I know. I brought it up last time, but I'm saying, I would want that person to reach out and coordinate that effort, because there's no reason that our fire trucks cannot, or our water trucks cannot be doing that. They do it in other communities. We are not different. We can, we can dictate whether or not they will be doing that. I just think coordinating that effort, I think that's a win-win to really work on this Emerald Ash bore disease, as well as be proactive, to be planting trees and make our, make our streets really look more like a community, rather than just smooth payment, pavement, which is, I'm sure what a couple in the audience are looking for, but just something that I was thinking about, and I didn't know where it was at. So, Bob, that's, if I, I could get an update, that would be great. Those are just some ideas and thoughts that I had. And I'll bring up the next one next week, so we're good. Thank you.
I will see some of you, or maybe all of you, tonight at 7:00, Mayor's Youth Commission.
Correct.
Really exciting event, so I will be there.
You will?
I will.
Then I'll move adjourned, so we can go have dinner.
I'll second. Where are we going?
Well, you tell me, I'll buy-
Apron? Yeah, what?
We're adjourned.
I'm out of here. Yep.
Aye. Redkin?
I can do that now, you know?
Redkin, can you vote?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Thank you.
Mayor.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
That was painful. I D, we got through it. We got-